Trustees, we'll just do a quick rule call before we get started. Okay. Trustee Arts. Trustee Dawson.
Present.
Trustee Erhat.
Present.
Trustee Dido Vitis. Trustee Goz. Trustee Hassan. Trustee King.
Present.
Trustee Hastings. Trustee Laskin. Trustee Lee.
Present.
Trustee Alka Rotman. Trustee McLean.
Present.
Trustee Nanziata. Trustee Patel. Trustee Pei.
Present.
Trustee Rajakulasingham. Trustee Rajwani. Trustee Shan.
Present.
Thank you. Trustee Sriswandra Rajah. Trustee Williams.
Present.
Trustee Wong.
I'm here.
We just need two more trustees for the forum. Hassan, could Hassan phone in? Trustee Arts.
Yes.
Present.
Thank you. Trustees, we are just waiting on one trustee to join and then we'll start.
You got ten minutes. And we can have it in the room.
I get detention if we're talking class and then your response.
Thank you, Joseph Towers. And we do have a quorum, everyone. So good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call today's special meeting to order. The purpose of this meeting is to consider 2025, 2026 financial projection, school based staff allocation and contracts. I invite those who can stand for the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge we are hosted on the lands of the Mississaugas, of the Anshnapi, the Ho'odin Ashonik Confederacy and the Wanda. We also recognize the enduring presence of all First Nations, Métis and Inuit people, with which you may be seated. Trustees have had a chance to review their agenda and recommendations. Are there any possible conflict of interest? If you have any declarations to make, please do so now. Seeing, hearing, none. Just to let you guys know that we are reordering the agenda item. So we'll be doing 3.2 before 3.1. Am I correct, Joseph Towers?
Yep.
Thank you. And we'll start with 3.2. It's Finance Budget Enrollment Committee Report from March 4, 2025, Special Meeting. It's on page 31 of the agenda item. This is to consider the recommendation from staff regarding the item on school based staff allocation 2023-2024. And I'd like to invite staff to speak on this.
Thank you. And through the chair, I'm just logging in so that I can share my screen. I apologize. Thank you. So we are bringing this report in for you. Just introduce the report again. So when it comes to school based staffing and this report, we bring it at this time for approval in order for trustees to approve a significant portion of the budget that we allocate out to our schools to meet collective agreement timelines. Just a reminder again, this is the very beginning of the budget process. There are still three and a half months left. We are always able to add staff after the fact. It is very challenging and sometimes impossible to be able to reduce staff. So again, just wanted to provide that reminder. In addition, this is again school based staffing, but it does not include any central staff that work in schools or that are allocated to schools centrally. So there are some positions that you may know that work in schools and you don't see them in this report. And that would be why they would be actually allocated centrally. There has been a significant amount of work that has gone into providing these recommendations this evening. And I want to thank the Staff Allocation Committee. It is made up of over 20 staff that includes senior team members, budget staff, people and culture staff, and staff who are directly impacted by the allocations. Specifically, I would like to acknowledge Lori Moore, Mark Ellis and Craig Snyder for leading us through the process. And I also want to sort of, sorry. The staff recommendations are based on a thorough review of regulations like class size, benchmarks provided by the ministry, collective agreements, funding and the needs of the system. And as I indicated, there is a significant amount of work that has gone into providing these recommendations, and the recommendations are supported by the committee. The committee has been meeting regularly since the fall using the projected enrollments from planning for 2015-16. School based staffing is mostly based on enrollment, and we will get into the enrollment a little bit later because I think that it's important. And so sometimes when you see a decrease in staffing, it does not indicate a decrease in support or an increase in class sizes. And again, I'm just asking trustees to consider the thought and the work that has gone into providing these numbers, the regulations attached to these numbers, the deficit that we're in and the commitment that is expected from the ministry and the deficit recovery program, and the fact that this is not the last opportunity to provide staffing. So with that, I'm going to switch over to the presentation. Thank you. Sorry. So again, we talked about all of the introduction, and I want to talk more about enrollment. So most of our school based staffing is based on enrollment, and a lot of the funding for school based staffing is also based on enrollment. Therefore, when enrollment increases, as it has in the past, there's an increase in staffing. And that doesn't mean that there's an increase in support or a decrease in class size. And that's what we've seen previously. Similarly, when enrollment decreases, as is expected for '25-'26, it does not mean that there's a decrease in support or an increase in class sizes. The support and the class size regulations will dictate the numbers that you are seeing here today. And just as a reminder, our class size regulations, our average kindergarten, average class size of 26 with less than or equal to 10% between 30 and 32. For our board, our average class size is 24 in the current year with only 1% being between 30 and 32. For grades one to three, the regulation requires 90% of classes under 20 or 20 and under, and 10% between 20 and 23 were in the current year at 91.2 and 8.8 respectively. In grades four to eight, the average class size required by regulation is 24.5, and TDSB's average is 24.1. For secondary, it's an average of 23 for in-person and 30 for online or e-learning, and we are also compliant in both of those areas. And just as a reminder, these regulations do not apply to self-contained or special education classes. Those classes are staffed at a much lower number, but do not factor into our class size averages. We did have a question yesterday about grades four to eight. And so just wanted to provide this information for trustees. This is based on our 2024-25 class sizes. So 95% of our classes are at 30% or lower. We have 4% that are in the 31 to 32 range and 1% that is in the 33 to 35 range. And this is purposely done, obviously, based on the regulations, but also recognizing the concerns that trustees expressed yesterday. We do recognize that there are opportunities for improvement in process and to continue to monitor and try to bring that 1% or commit to bringing that 1% even lower, and that is our expectation for '25-'26. Again, I mentioned enrollment, and I think that this is a really important slide for us to take a look at. So in the first column, we see our enrollment for '24-'25 budget. So when we brought staffing forward last year, this is where we were. This is what we were projecting for the year moving forward. And it was 237,532.5. Again, and this is a testament to the work of our Planning and Enrollment Department, we were off by 332.5 pupils. So for our revised estimates, which is again taking our October 31st actual enrollment and projecting based on history, our March 31st enrollment, and we see a decrease of 332.5. So on 237,000, that's basically being pretty much perfect. And I do want to commend the work of the Planning and Enrollment Committee. So those same people using their same expectations, their same assumptions have projected our 2025-26 budget to be 235,810. That is a decrease of 1,722.5 from our 2025 budget. That is a decrease of 1,722.5 from our 24-25 budget. So, it is a fairly, I would say, significant amount. That being said, based on our past experience and based on the expertise of our Planning and Enrollment Department, we are very confident in using these numbers for our budget purposes. So, when staffing, when we say staffing is impacted by actual enrollment, and firstly, there was a decrease in enrollment, although slight, from the budget to our revised estimates. And so, staffing was adjusted accordingly. And that happens every year. As we, as our actual enrollment comes into play, if there's an increase, we add teachers through reorganization. And if there's a decrease, then we decrease the number of teachers required. And it, again, doesn't impact class size. It's because of the actual number of students we have and the classes that we need in order to meet those requirements. So, our enrollment is projected to decrease by almost 1,400 pupils from the revised estimates or 1,700 students from the budget last year. That does result in a decrease in teaching staff. But class sizes and support remain the same. And I think that's really, really important. This is truly just enrollment-driven. This isn't a budget decision. This isn't a place where we've made reductions in order to help us to balance the budget. This is coming here today with decreases in enrollment, or sorry, decreases in staffing as a result of decrease in enrollment and using the work that has been done by the Staff Allocation Committee. So, we also talked about staffing timelines and what that means. We do anticipate to roll out our staffing to schools after March break. So, on March 17th and 18th, pending board approval. Our principals develop their class organizations, their timetables. They do the consultation with school staffing committees. And then, at the beginning of April, and for elementary, it's April 2nd and secondary, April 3rd, you see the surplus declarations on the side for support staff, April 22nd and some of them, May 22nd. School-based staffing, school surplus is determined using the collective agreement timelines as indicated. By mid-April, the classroom organization's timetables are finalized and then surplus staffing to the board begins. And that's a really important distinction. When a teacher or a staff member is declared surplus to a school, it does not mean that they've lost their job with TDSB. It means that they likely will be moving. As we indicated last evening, we usually have enough and we would expect in the current year for this to be no different. Retirements that happen between now and September that would allow us to continue with the, without having to make any permanent reductions in employees. There's still, there's a reduction in numbers, but attrition will help us to be able to not have to declare individual surplus from the board. They will still be declared surplus from their schools, but not from the board. So, I'm not going to go through the presentation of yesterday. The staffing projections are in the report. We will be happy to answer any questions about them. But again, the approval of this report is important for us to be able to move forward according to these timelines. It isn't a budget decision. More, it is an enrollment reality. And we would be happy to look at additions to the budget that trustees would request or recommend, but are hoping that we can do that as we have all of the information in front of us later in this budget process. So, with that, I will turn it back to the chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Associate Director Zucker. We do have a speaker's list and we'll start with Trustee Lee first. Trustee Lee, are you online?
I am. Sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't find the unmute button. Can you just stay up there with me for one second? I'm just trying to make this work. Sorry. I was trying to make time work.
Mr. Chair, does my audio work right now?
Yes.
Thank you. Three, Mr. Chair, two staff. Thank you once again for the presentation, the work that you have done so far to make sure that we have staff and located and planned for the next year. Team, I have a big concern in yesterday's Finance Committee meeting on the sizes of our classrooms between grade 4 to 8, where multiple schools have indicated to me that their classroom sizes are now up to 35 students. And in fact, some schools have multiple classes of up to 35 students. It's been expressed to me in no uncertain terms from both student, staff and parents that a classroom of that size is ineffective when it comes to providing an education that our student deserves. It creates a tremendous amount of pressure and stress on our teachers and it reduces the amount of time that they can spend on each student. And it does not help with education. So, I know we're under tremendous funding pressure, but I also understand that when our province has negotiated the collective agreement with our unions, it was not intended that classrooms should have up to 35 students. Our average of 24.8 makes allocation for smaller classes in smaller schools, makes allocations for special education classes, but it also makes allocation to make sure that most of our classes remain under 30 students. And some classes might go over, but not by that much. From conversations that I've had with staff, my understanding is that this is indeed true when it comes to the majority of classrooms within our board. But there are unfortunately exceptions where students are not being served like how they deserve. So, with this, I'd like to move a motion to direct staff to make sure that 90% of our classes between grades 4 to 8 are capped at 30 students or less. And that if there is any exceptions that needs to be made from a central perspective, we can allow up to 32 students per class centrally. Now, I have sent this through to all of our trustee colleagues and also staff members. I've heard fantastic feedback on why this is a good idea. There are just a couple of things I want to highlight. We want this to be measured and implemented at the school level at fall reorganization, which means we want to reorganize, you know, the minimal amount of times to make sure that in the fall, our classrooms are sized as intended. And it's also upon permissible school space. So, if there's a school that literally has run out of any space inside the school building itself or any space to put additional portables, they can't add another class, then we can't do anything. And also, we want to make sure that local schools have the ability to request for an exception. So, if they feel like a larger class is good for their community and their parents agree to it and their staffing is ready to take it on, go for it. And lastly, I just want to make sure that this is not intended to take away from any smaller classes for special education, any smaller classes for low L O I schools, any... And it's meant to align with any provincially legislated and collectively negotiated class size averages. So, I think this is, this will be really good for our students. I don't think we've done it before. I don't think this will create financial stress on their system because according to what I understand, we're mostly already doing this. And I hope we will support this and send a message to our parents that the Board of Trustees at the Toronto District School Board believe in quality education and we believe that class sizes should be controlled. Okay. So, I hope you will all support this motion. And I hope you will join me in sending clarity and assurances to our students and staff that we believe in quality education for every student. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Lee. And we do have a second, which is me. And I have no comments on this. Do we have a speaker's list? I'll make sure to tell. Vice Chair, tell. Do you have a speaker's list on motion? Just to clarify, because I have a speaker's list, Trustee Shan and Trustee McLean, are you speaking on the motion or on the actual item? Okay. All right.
Sorry. Mr. Chair, I was on the actual item.
So, Chair Shan, are you speaking on the motion or...?
No, I was, I was on the list for the actual, main item.
So, we'll come back to you. So, we have Trustee Arts and Trustee McLean. Trustee Arts, go ahead.
Hi. Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I just wondered if staff could give any perspectives on potential budget implications? I think, given the, given the additional flexibility, local flexibility that the movers have added into the motion, could staff comment on any perspective on like significant financial impact or restrictions that this might cause?
Through the chair, we do know that there were 42 classes that were above, that were, there were 26 at 33, 12 at 34, 4 at 35 at our count date. So, that's 42 classes in total. We don't believe that all of those would require an extra teacher in order to be addressed. In fact, some of them, the principals have made that decision based on the needs of the schools and decided to keep lower enrollment in other 4 to 8 classes and kept higher enrollment in some of the 48 classes, again, based on them knowing the needs of their school. So, if we were provided this direction, they wouldn't have that flexibility. In some cases, we may not be able to add additional classes because of space constrictions or... So, there's no ability, there's no room in the school and there's no ability to add portables. So, we are unsure of how many of those 42, if any, would require additional teaching staff. We'd have to look at, we know that we have some wiggle room in our average. And so, it's just a matter of where, obviously, students don't come in groups of 24.5. And so, sometimes the configurations of the schools impact the class size. So, again, without doing a really deep dive, we're not sure of the financial impact, if any. But we do know that there are certain cases where we won't have any choices but to go above 32. And we do know that in some cases, principals make that decision based on the need at their school.
So, my follow-up question would be, is the last line of the motion that local schools should have the option to request for exception based on need, does that provide enough flexibility for local schools to meet a challenging scenario? Like they ran into classes or classrooms, sorry. Or I gave an example of some of my schools the last two years have opted to create, especially for middle school in that 6 to 8 range, opted to create a slightly smaller class that also has, where the resource teacher or the CYW is stationed. Sorry, for lack of a better term, they have their desk there because the school has taken an approach to group together students with needs, like needing access to the resource teacher to maximize the efficiency of using the research teacher in one space. Now, to have that as a smart, but that, that means that the other classes in the school then absorb a few of the other students. So, would that still allow that kind of local flexibility, that last line?
Through the chair, yes, I do believe that the two exceptions in here, which says contingent on permissible space in the school and allowing local schools to have the option for a request for exemption would accommodate that. When I, when I'm looking at the financial impact, I would guess, without doing a deep dive into it, that a significant number of those 42 that we currently have that are above 32 would fall into that category.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Arts. Trustee McLean, you had a question on the motion.
The creativity that this provides, it does restate a concern that I know trustees share around the few instances that we have that have larger class sizes than any of us would like to have. And yet, at the same time, addresses and has, within it, contains the flexibility around recognizing limitations that may physically exist in the schools and creating local schools the ability to apply a foreign exemption because they may, they may conclude that the needs of the school can be dealt with differently. I think I've shared in the past that my wife was an educator and used to spend time on the staffing committees that she would do. And quite often, there would be a situation where they would be willing to go one larger than, than would be ideal if it meant that we would forego the cascading set of split grades that would be created by addressing that situation. So, having the flexibility for local schools to be able to analyze their allocations and, and make, and make requests for the exemption, I think, is a really beneficial tool here. So, I'll be supportive. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee McLean. Any of the trustees online who wants to speak on the motion? Any trustees in the room? Trustee Shan?
Yes.
Do you want to speak on the motion or the actual item?
Yeah, I just put my name for this one now.
Okay. Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair, just, just in terms of the information that the staff present to us around classroom sizes. Just through you, Mr. Chair, I want to ask the staff if they have a... For the other grades that they presented on one of the slides where they talked about the average being 24.5 and so on, do they have like a bar graph of numbers as opposed to average? You know, average sometimes tells a story, but average not always. Now, statistically, there are multiple ways to present that information. And sometimes I find the classroom average does not quite tell the full story. I don't know if they have shared it before and I've missed it, but just wanted to check through you, Mr. Chair, if there are other documents that are available that talks about classroom sizes as a, as a bit of a bar graph or like, that, that gives a little bit more of a sense of how they're distributed.
Through the chair, we do have that information and we can share it with trustees. We do know again, that for 4 to 8, because we were looking at that one specifically, 1% of our classes have a class size of below 11. 10% are between 12 and 19. 65% are between 20 and 27. And then, the 23% are between 28 and 35. And we know that that's 5% above 35. So, or sorry, above 30. So, we're looking at 17%. That is between 20 and, sorry, between 28 and 30. So, we can provide that information to trustees via trustee weekly. I do believe that we report back on class size compliance in November usually through F Beck and would provide some of that information. Then we could, we could continue to provide that. then we could, we could continue to provide that information, uh, through that report.
Great, thank you. Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, um, so as, as of now, as, as this motion stands, are you, uh, are this staff saying through you, Mr. Chair, that we are actually compliant of this request? Um, if this request has, becomes officially a, a, a motion that passes, uh, with the kind of percentage that's outlined?
Uh, through the chair with the hard caps of thirty-two, it's no class, we do have, um, as I indicated, forty-two classes that are above thirty-two students. That being said, without doing the, the deep dive, we don't know if they meet the, all of them meet the exceptions based on the motion.
Yeah, um, thank you. I think, um, I'll, I'll follow up, uh, later to get more, uh, I think the classroom sizes related information, um, and anecdotally, I think trustee Lee talks about a few of these schools and, and the same concern gets raised, uh, in multiple places in my award as well, so I'm, I'm just looking at the distribution numbers and, and, uh, uh, it, it looks like we might be hearing, uh, numbers that might be much higher than what is being spoken, so I just wanted to get clarity around, uh, around how we can look at where the classes are, which, which, um, maybe even, I don't know if it has to be private information, if it goes more into word-by-word type information, but it will be helpful to also look at where, where those distribution of classes that are higher, uh, number, uh, in, in, uh, and if it's, uh, uh, if teacher shortage or, 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 you know, fill rates and other things have had any impact on how classrooms are shaped in some of the schools. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Shan. Director, you want to make a comment in this? Thank you.
Uh, thank you, um, and through you, uh, through you, Chair, further to associate director, um, Zooker's, um, comments. Um, uh, while based on our current initial, um, analysis, um, it would be, um, accurate, we believe that, um, our data is in line with, um, with this motion presently. We do as staff have, um, concerns, just reiterate, um, uh, the associate director's, um, comments, um, about, um, the challenges of a hard cap in, um, any flexibility in, um, in certain, uh, unique, um, scenarios. Um, we believe that, uh, as well, and I believe, um, that, uh, uh, trustee McLean may have, uh, mentioned this, although I didn't hear clearly, um, that, um, there may be other, um, uh, uh, impacts of, um, of a hard cap that, um, that may be less preferred, um, as well, um, such as the impact on, um, on, uh, uh, split classes or combined grades, that oftentimes, um, one way of reducing, um, the average is to, um, increase the number of combined grades within a school, which meets the average, um, allows us to stay within the guidelines, but that may not be preferred. That's one of the, um, the, the impacts that may be, that may be created. And so while, um, much work has been done on the program side to, um, support effective teaching and learning in various settings, including in, um, in combined grades, and that is a common practice, not just in the TDSB, but also, um, across the province, um, in, uh, in school boards. Um, oftentimes, um, it's not necessarily the preferred, um, option of, um, parents and sometimes, um, of staff, so that's one implication that, um, we wanted to, um, uh, uh, highlight as well. Um, and, uh, just to go further to, um, uh, uh, some of the initial comments by the associate director, um, Azooker, um, uh, class size is, um, an item, um, uh, of central, uh, uh, bargaining, and in principle, um, it would be our advice, um, that when it comes to class size and limitations on class size, that that matter is best considered, um, in, uh, central bargaining. And so, um, to the comments, um, by, uh, trustee Lee, um, it is accurate that this is not, um, I'm asking to going contravention of that. Um, however, um, uh, in principle, um, uh, uh, bringing the class size discussion to a local decision providing those limitations, um, would be, um, would be a, um, a concern. And I think finally, um, uh, uh, hearing some of the comments, um, coming out of committee that has, um, led staff to, um, look at, um, current data and look at some of our processes. Um, there's certainly opportunities, um, for, um, us to strengthen, um, our processes as staff to address, um, some of the questions and the concerns that have been raised, and already staff have identified, um, what some of those opportunities are, and we would look forward, um, to the, um, the opportunity to, uh, bring, uh, some of those considerations back to trustees to demonstrate, um, how those questions and those concerns can be, can be addressed. Um, recognizing, um, and if I may speak to, um, a specific example that was raised, um, in committee, um, in, in our initial look, although we've not done the deepest dive yet, in our initial look, um, we've identified, um, a couple of steps, um, uh, where, uh, things, um, should have led to a different, um, outcome. And so, um, in, um, my role as a new director, um, uh, of the board, I would ask, um, trustees to give consideration to staff, um, taking this back and, um, looking carefully, um, at our processes, looking carefully at our data, um, and identify those opportunities where, um, strengthening of our process, um, can actually achieve the outcomes here without, um, uh, infringing on the, um, on the, the parameters of negotiations and what's uh, done locally, what's done centrally, and without, um, uh, providing a hard cap that, um, that, uh, may limit, um, uh, what the board is able to do in certain circumstances, uh, and, uh, and so forth. So I would, I would, I would ask for that, um, consideration. And then finally, um, uh, we want to provide our best advice to trustees at, um, all times, and we want to, um, indicate our best considerations, um, at all times. And so, um, what we're doing in our responses, um, is providing the best responses based on current analysis, recognizing that there is more analysis, uh, to, to, um, to be done. Um, and that may include, um, looking, for example, at, um, certain reviews of programs that may also impact, um, class sizes that may not be factoring into, uh, some of these considerations at this point. So, um, essentially, what I am requesting of trustees is the opportunity, um, given you've hired a new director, to, for the new director to work, um, uh, with, uh, a, a team, um, to look carefully at the questions that are being asked, look carefully at the opportunities to address it all through our procedures, um, and again, even through our initial look, we've identified some of those opportunities and bring back, um, our considerations to, um, to trustees. Thank you, and, uh, back to you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you, Director, and we do have one more trustee on the speakers list, trustee King.
Thank you through your chair. Uh, I appreciate the director's comments, and I think that, um, they indirectly addressed, uh, some of what I just wanted to quickly respond to. Uh, I wanted to thank, uh, trustee Lee for the work on this and for the, the addition of the, uh, line at the end to allow the, the local schools to have that, uh, flexibility and the, the option to request an exception. I just wanted to flag, uh, I know that when you were speaking to that, you mentioned, or trustee Lee mentioned, uh, that that exception could be sought if there was, uh, agreement from, uh, the staff, from parents, from school community. And I just wanted to flag that there, if this moves forward and in the consideration by staff, that there's clarity around that process, um, that it's still a responsibility of a principal, um, with the consultation that happens now, or if we are actually proposing a different, uh, possibility or procedure where there is more input, uh, coming from family that, that we're clear about that. I think just moving forward as we talk about, uh, what school community voice, what consultation looks like, I think that, that clarity is necessary. Um, so thank you for, uh, taking that back with you.
Thank you, trustee King. And I don't see any other trustees on speakers list. Trustees, if you have joined after the core roll call, can you please let us know? You have joined after the roll call?
That's Hastings.
Trustee Davidis, are you online? Trustee Rajwani, you are in line?
I'm here.
Thank you. Trustee Rajwani?
Yeah, I'm here.
Thank you.
Technical difficulties.
So we'll open the vote, and it will be a recorded vote requested by trustee Lee. We're doing my square break.
Trustee Lee is in favor.
Trustee Pay in favor?
Anne in favor.
Hassan in favor?
Dawson in favor.
Trustee Rajwani in favor.
Uh, trustee Wong in favor.
Justice Patel in favor? And this has carried. Thank you, trustees. So we'll move back to the item three point two, and trustee McLean, uh, would like you to speak on this. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, um, I would like to move the, uh, my minority report from yesterday's F Beck, uh, meeting, as there was, uh, no recommendation, um, that came from committee. And do I, uh, can I speak to this?
Please.
Okay, thank you. Um, as was shared by, um, associate director Zooker, I think this is, um, this is in essence is the floor of this process. This is the foundation of, uh, what our budget will be. Um, I think it's the required part, there will be lots of opportunities, uh, to debate priorities and potential additions, um, that we will consider and that we, uh, think are in the best interest of our students, uh, and their families. Um, but moving this at this time and, and, and passing this at this time, um, allows us to avoid a great deal of disruption, um, in our schools and uncertainty regarding notifications that, um, staff members, uh, would get if the staffing doesn't get approved, their contractual notifications that they're required to get, um, and if we don't get this passed and we have to, uh, and we have to send them out, I think that's really problematic. Um, this is a foundational piece, and I hope that, um, we're able to pass this and then ultimately, um, hear from community, hear from our advisory committees, um, learn what the funding actually is, um, when, when it is announced by the ministry, and then, um, you know, strongly and vigorously debate the priorities in which the board, uh, thinks is important. Um, but to, but failing to, to pass this today, I think is really problematic, and, um, so I'm hoping that we can take this first step, um, and commit to doing the, the harder work that, that lies ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee McLean. One second, one second. Do you speak? Yeah, but we have, uh, speakers list, we have trustee Shan. Trustee Shan?
Thank you, um, through you, Mr. Chair, um, a few questions to the staff, um. Just for clarity, what is the total number of, uh, positions that were listed as surplus last year at this time, through the last year's budget, uh, and how many, uh, retirement took place? Um, and how many of those positions were built through attrition? Just to, just to get a comparison to last year from what we are proposing this year.
Uh, through the chair, I'll ask, uh, executive officer Ellis if he has that information available, or if we would have to take that away to get, uh, to, to, uh, produce that data.
And through the chair, uh, I'll have to take that away and, uh, produce the data to provide through trustee weekly.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, through you, uh, so, uh, just as a summary, what's the total number of staffing FTE that will be reduced this time?
We're speaking to this director.
Uh, through the chair, we'll, we'll have to do the calculation, I apologize. Um, we will come back to you with that one.
So I'm, through you, Mr. Chair, I heard that we would have all the positions that I, you know, most likely all the positions that are declared surplus would end up being not surplus to the board, because we know that there is retirement. So do we at least know what is the expect, expected number of FTE retirement in school-based staffing this year?
Uh, so through the chair, that saving is based on the fact that in, in previous years, we've had larger reductions and have not been in the position to have to declare, uh, staff surplus. So it's just based on historical, um, data, uh, in a, the, the reason why this is a little bit difficult, the first ask is because the numbers that are in the reports are the, the budgeted numbers, whereas the numbers of, that we actually have on hand are, um, are smaller because the revised estimates made a reduction based on, uh, decreased enrollment. So if we look at the numbers in this report and you just compared the twenty-four, twenty-five to the twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, that isn't the true number of reduction. So I, I apologize, and, and we will take a look at where we are with regards to the current staff that we have on hand compared to the recommendations, um, uh, moving forward, and then I will see if, uh, executive officer Ellis would like to speak to the retirement.
And through the chair, uh, we're a little early in the process, as retirement notifications aren't due to the board until May fifteenth, so that information is yet to come in. As was indicated, this is the first step in, uh, the entire, the entirety of the process.
Thank you. Um, through you, Mr. Chair, if we are not able to say what's the FTE that will be reduced as a result of quote-unquote enrollment only, um, I heard earlier, uh, through, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, in the presentation by associate director, it is mostly related to enrollment. Is it mostly or is it all related to enrollment? If it's mostly related to enrollment, what else is it related to?
Uh, through the chair, I will turn to executive officer Snyder, but my understanding is that, um, in some instances, it is based on funding, which again is part of enrollment, but there is, I believe the library is as a result of a decrease in funding.
Through you, Mr. Chair, that is correct. There's been a change in the funding, uh, for library teachers in elementary.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, I think it will be very helpful for us to know which ones are enrollment-specific and which ones are related to funding-specific, so that, uh, you know, the community also can know where, um, the library, for example, is a critical part of our school, and, uh, and a reduction would mean, uh, a significant impact to many of our students. Then, um, uh, Mr. Chair, I also want to ask, uh, about, uh, special education. Is there a way to know if we don't have the FTE, uh, comparison for other positions, at least for special education-related positions? What is the reduction that we are talking about? How many FTE are being proposed to be reduced? And are we expecting the special education, uh, related needs or the number of students who are identified with needing special education also reduced, or is that enrollment being separately looked at?
Uh, thank you, and through the chair, at the elementary, uh, level, our teachers are being reduced by thirteen point five from, um, what was approved for the twenty-four, twenty-five plan. Uh, we currently have that same, uh, number minus the thirteen point five out in our system, so we are, So we are recommending for next year that the allocation that is currently in the system be maintained for next year. Again, representing a 13.5 differential from what was approved in this year's, the 2425 budget. At the secondary level, teachers, that reduction, again, with the same approach is reduced by 1.5. And for support staff, the allocation, it has been reduced by 15.5 from what was approved in the 2425 budget. And there is 15.5 allocation not in the system currently. So we are recommending that same allocation that is in the system currently be approved for the 2526 school year. And the last part of the question through you, Chair, if I could just have that rephrased. I'm not quite understanding what the question was asking and I'd be pleased to answer it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, I was asking if we have seen a proportionate decrease in students requiring special needs related support as the enrollment declined? Or with the increased support for identification and with increased parent knowledge around support and availability of identification? Are we seeing an increase in the number of students requiring special education-related support? And if that number is being reflected in the budget?
Thank you very much. And of course, I've got 5,000 sheets of paper in front of me and can't find the right one. So I'm going to go on memory, which I thankfully know is accurate. There are currently 3,500 fewer IEPs that have been generated over the course of this year, trustee Shan, from the full course of IEP count last year. I caution that amount, that sum to say that we are only on March the 5th. So I, I don't anticipate seeing 3,500 IEPs being generated between now and the end of the year. So the trend of having reduced enrollment for the TDSB, we are seeing a similar trend of reduced students with special education needs within our system. I hope that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Through you, Mr. Chair, this question is maybe harder to answer right now, but maybe of interest for me to know if not now, later, related to last year, how many new teachers will be able to hire for elementary or secondary in the last school year or this current school year, maybe even? If you know that number.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we will have to take that back and respond again through trustee weekly.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I know I'm, I've used my speaking time quite a bit on the, on the questions, but I just want to say that over time, with reduction of staff every year and with the reduction of teaching positions and then, you know, not being able to hire new staff because of the fact that we might be just filling in some of the surplus teachers with teachers that, that have been, that are, that have retired. It's increasingly becoming a strain on our system on the frontline. And I do think that, you know, I, I do want to, I do want to know. I think maybe some of the trustees might know what are the options if, if you're not able to approve the, the slate here, as, as some of us have consistently been very clear that, that we, we do not, or I personally do not support a reduction to frontline staff. And in fact, if we are able to use additional staff because of declining enrollment to make sure that we have additional support for the students that we have, that, that would make sense. And I know it would mean a budget issue, but I think we are dealing with a budget at the end of the year and we will have to do it together. This is the significant part of our budget and to clear this ahead of time and then come back later to deal with it at the full budget does not make sense to me. So I just want to put my position out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Shan. And we have trustee Erhat.
Okay, thank you very much. And through you, Chair, I'm wondering what, now that the order has shifted, there was a motion in the item we are discussing after 3.16, business arising, keeping additional staffing positions through 2526 budget. And within that, there are different staffing levels proposed for elementary vice principals and secondary vice principals than what we have on the screen here. And so I'm at, at special FPEC yesterday, my motion was deemed out of order. But I would like to propose again that item four be amended to allocate 186.5 FTE of vice principals elementary, set out in appendix D. And element five, allocate 161 FTE of vice principals secondary, is set out in appendix D and also in alignment with the FPEC recommendation from the February 27th special meeting, which won't be considered now until after this. And so that is something I would like to move, to amend this for consistency. Is this the appropriate time or how will this be tackled now that the agenda was reordered? Thank you. Yeah, then I would like to move that amendment and I'd be grateful for a seconder. At the special FPEC, trustee Rajwani had seconded. I don't know, trustee Rajwani, if you're in line and would have any comments? Thank you.
I will second that. No comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
And shall I speak to the motion? I'll simply say that at our special FPEC on February 27th, the committee had approved the, that allocations made during the 2425 year be our base staffing allocation for 2526 in this area, as well as some areas of central staffing that included child and youth workers, as well as some other roles, safety monitors, et cetera, which won't be tackled until central. But this is an area in school-based allocation where the committee had approved that. In the past, we have found for stability in our system that having this in place is incredibly important. And so I hope we will have trustees' support and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Erhat. Trustee Rajwani, do you want to add something to this?
No, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Rajwani. Speaker's list on this item?
I have a question, Chair.
You have a question? Okay, go ahead, trustee McLean.
Just a query, through you, Mr. Chair, just a, a question of clarification. If this matter is, if this matter is defeated, either, either way, does the result of this matter being included eliminate it being brought later? What is yet to follow? Like, I'm trying to determine whether the ramifications of including it now and tying it all together makes it more complicated to get this passed initially.
Yeah, through the point of personal privilege to the chair, perhaps we could consider that item. We could move and pass by two-thirds to consider that item prior to going to full allocation. But I don't know, I, I would look to.
Thank you, trustee McLean and trustee Erhat. We just need two minutes and we'll take a recess for two minutes. Thank you.
No, I just, I don't want, I don't want people to, people aren't happy with it. I don't want them to know that the foundation. I'm happy with the thing and I'm happy to support it.
The mics are still on.
I just want to lose it all.
Thank you, trustees. We're back online.
Through the chair, when we get the report from February 27th, part A is basically the same thing as what you are moving now. So part A should not be put on the floor, but you could go straight to part B and deal with that. So it's being dealt with now.
So it's being dealt with now?
Right. But part B would still be dealt with when we get to that report.
Okay. I can move the amendments in order?
Yes.
Yeah.
Defeating it won't, won't nullify the fact that it would appear again. Defeating it, if there, there's only two possibilities, it passes or it doesn't. So if it gets defeated, it would still get talked, would we still talk about it?
No, because it's, it's, it's the same matter. You would not talk about it. Then it was defeated. You would go straight to part B.
It's like defeated now and defeated later on. I think it's the same thing, right?
I would argue that it's, that it's not, that if they're heard separately, there's an opportunity to approve the foundational component of the budget and to approve that portion and then vote against it conceivably against the amendment. By putting them together, trustees are forced to decide whether we want the entire package. So I think there is a difference. I'm not disputing what you've ruled. I'm just suggesting that there was a difference in why I asked.
And the point of privilege there.
Yeah, we can vote ad city. I don't want this then, if that's.
Yeah. And, and through the chair, there is also a matter of the central staffing that formed part of the motion in the element that is now being covered after. So we also have that to consider. Thank you.
So trustees will go back and back to recess for five minutes. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
So are we back to the main report?
Yes.
Okay, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say thank you to staff for all the work in putting these numbers together and keeping us informed. I don't, I don't have any particular questions. Thank you for the presentation as well and the added information today based on trustees' questions from the other, from yesterday. I just, I have one comment. This is my seventh year doing this process. We are talking to other boards. To my knowledge, we are the only board that makes staff run through these kind of, the hoops and the work and the stress. And I know it's a lot of stress. To present us something that we actually don't actually have any decision-making power on. These are the centrally negotiated class size and funding information that comes from the province and our unions. Our unions have already done the work to do this. And every year, we make staff jump through these hoops. Northern Board, to my knowledge, makes staff do this. I sincerely appreciate the information, but the, will I approve it? Will I not? This is not a budget decision that we are making as a local board. These are the enrollment-based staffing numbers that form the basis of every single school board's budget. It's the same process. And yet, I know there's a great deal of staff, staff stress that we might not pass it, and then staff will not be able to go away and do their work. I would like to, going forward, since we have a new director and we have proved in principle, a new reporting format for the board, a different way to do the budget that does not make staff jump through a million hoops just to bring us information and does not create this pre-school staffing stress every year. I'm being asked to approve this. I'm really actually not making any decisions here because these are the enrollment-based staffing numbers. I don't get to change that. They're in collective agreement. So I am going to ask as a forward piece that we do this differently next year and take all of the politicking, because there is a lot of politicking in here around this, again, on stuff that is centrally negotiated between the province, our unions, and actually, sorry, our province or unions and our school boards associations come to these agreements. And so I would like the board to move to aspects of board meetings and reports where we actually are making decisions on things. We are actually having input. And so in future, it would be nice if staff could go away and staff our schools and then we get to the, the meat of the budget process where we can actually, you know, tweak the system for our local needs, fund those programs, look for funding for those programs that we want to fund, add in the extra staff that like VPs in special education that we want to, you know, within our budget flexibility that we can add in and engage in it that way. And that's my only request, and thank you again for all of the work.
Thank you, Trustee Arts. Trustee Dawson.
Thank you through the chair. I, I do want to echo Trustee Arts' comments to staff and, and the thank you for putting together such detailed information and the laborious process around that. I just have a question actually in building on that because I heard Trustee Shan ask how many of these reductions have to do with enrollment? And I don't believe there was an answer. So I just want to ask that question again in case I misheard it. Are all of these reductions to do with enrollment through the chair?
Thank you, Trustee Dawson. Director?
Thank you and through you, Chair. And I may call on Associate Director Stacy Zucker and her team to add additional comments. I believe, Trustee Dawson, that the response that was given is that the vast majority of the staffing is dependent on enrollment or is enrollment-driven. But there are a couple of lines and one example was given that is related to funding as well. And the specific example was with respect to library where there was a reduction in the provincial funding for that line and therefore a reduction in staffing. But by and large, and heartening back to Trustee Arts' comments, and thank you for, for adding your support for those acknowledgements of staff effort to, to those earlier, earlier comments. These are enrollment-driven and largely an operational process in line with the Education Act and collective agreement guidelines. And within the budget process, in the appropriate time, there would be the opportunity for trustees to consider enhancements and, and consideration can be given to funding source and other aspects that might influence trustee decisions. But to come back to your direct question, it is enrollment-driven by and large with the, with a few exceptions. And Associate Director Zucker?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The, there's three major changes for teachers. One would be enrollment, obviously we've spoken about, there's funding changes. And then, as you'll see in the secondary profile teachers, there are some increases and decreases in our profile teacher allocation. So that's program-related changes as well.
Okay, through the chair. I want to be realistic with this, and I think there are trustees that are not going to vote in favor of anything that's an actual cut due to a funding cut. Although there might be some understanding around cuts due to declining enrollment as that is not taking away technically anything from students. So my recommendation, and staff can take it for what they will, but would be to go through numbers one through 13 here and let us know what is totally based on enrollment. And then we vote ad Sari Adam on it. Because if we're voting all or nothing, the assumption is going to be that some of these are due to cuts and you may not get the votes that you want. So if staff are willing to go line by line, that would be awesome, but I will leave that up to you through the chair.
Thank you, Trustee Dawson. Okay, we'll do that, Trustee Dawson. We need some time to make it possible.
Thank you.
Do you have anybody else on the speaker's list? No, we are done. Okay, trustees, while we are preparing for the vote, we'll take a brief break for five minutes. Thank you.
Sorry, just, just to be clear, I still had time on the clock. And are we, is staff providing that information or we're just going straight to voting ad Sari Adam? I'm confused.
We are looking to see what's possible to meet that request and will advise accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Dawson, are you online?
Through the chair, that's correct.
Thank you.
And so before we do that, I just want to reiterate, a lot of this is based on enrollment and funding. In a lot of cases, you're going to hear me say that the funding or the, the benchmarks would have asked us to decrease the number of staff. But again, I go back to the Staff Allocation Committee, which is made up of over 20 staff that have these staff reporting to them that determine how to best support the system. And so in some cases, when there was a decrease in funding, that committee said, you know what? We can't operate without it. And that decision was made and that proposal is coming forward. So we have decreased enrollment, which means there's decreased funding for everything. But for most of what you're going to see here, we left the staffing numbers the same. So when we left them the same, that's that Staff Allocation Committee doing their due diligence to say, we can operate, we cannot operate without keeping the staffing levels the same. Or them saying, we actually, the funding's decreased and based on the work that we're doing and our knowledge of the system and our knowledge of the schools, we can actually make these decreases. So I just wanted to say that before I start to go through this because you're going to hear me say it's based on funding and then you're going to see that the number is kept the same. And that doesn't mean that we got more funding. That means that what we're proposing actually is because we know that the need of the system and we're saying it needs to remain the same in order for us to be able to support students. So I just, before we, we started, I wanted to, to reiterate that part. So the first one, and maybe if we can put the motion up just so that I can go through, make sure I have the proper order. And I'm going to be referring back to the report from yesterday and specifically the appendices. So starting on Agenda Page Seven from yesterday, you can follow along in the numbers that I'm speaking to. Because when we look at the position of teachers, there are a number of different positions that make up that total number. So when we look at the, the Appendix A, you've got classroom and prep time. This is purely based on enrollment. Our ESL is based on enrollment and also need, based on the, the students that we have in the system that need ESL support. Our Learning Opportunities Grant is also based on enrollment and need. So we actually, even though we have increased here, we do think that it will assist us in actually having a better class size average. And we did talk about that yesterday at the Special Effect Meeting. Reading Intervention Teachers, and I just, because it's here, it's not a reduction of 42, they are actually centrally staffed. And so therefore, they have been, they will be included in the central staff and they will be, either they will be maintained accordingly. So it's not a reduction, it's just a different place that they're being allocated from. Library, there is a reduction in funding and that did lead to a reduction of eight. Guidance, based on funding, there would have been a reduction in funding, but we kept it the same. Special Education is based on enrollment. Again, this is teachers. So this is the number of classes that we need to support our self-contained teaching or, or classes. And so as students move around the system or as they graduate from elementary school to secondary school, we will be able to, or these numbers are reviewed on an annual basis. So that decrease is based on enrollment. Our ECPP, Education and Community Partnership Program, we are funded for the programs that we have. And so that number, if it changes, it's because of a program was either added or taken away and that is funded dollar for dollar by the ministry. Caring and Safe Schools is based on funding that we receive to support student safety. And then the Profile Teachers are on Page Eight. You'll see that they haven't changed. Most of them are based on either enrollment in programs or need and the health and safety are contractual. So that's number one, or elementary teachers.
Thank you, Associate Director Zucker. Ready? Yeah, okay. We're voting on Escrip, right?
Yeah.
Okay, trustees, we are voting on Escrip. The vote is open, trustees.
Trustee Lee in favor.
Trustee Patel in favor.
Hassan in favor.
Pay in favor.
Trustee Nanziata in favor.
Trustee Rashmini in favor.
Wong in favor.
Trustee Davidis, Trustee Shan, Trustee Dawson.
Dawson against.
Chair Shan. How do you vote? Trustee Shan. Chair Shan, are you online? Yep. Okay, let's mark Chair Shan absent. It carried. Thank you, trustees. Next, it's part, it's B.
Oh, sorry. Through the chair, so number two is our secondary students. This is Appendix B on Page Nine of yesterday's report. Our classroom teachers are based on enrollment. ESL is based on enrollment and need. Learning Opportunities based on funding and enrollment. Library based on funding. And again, in this instance, the funding would have decreased, but the, the Staffing Allocation Committee would have contemplated on whether we needed to maintain the same staffing levels. And that is what's being recommended today. Guidance is based on funding and that would be the same because again, when we have decreased enrollment, we have decreased funding, but we are still maintaining the same, same staffing levels. Special Education is based on enrollment and that again has to do with the number of students that are, the number of classes that are required for our self-contained classes. ECPP are the same as the elementary where they are programs that are funded dollar for dollar and as a program's increase, that number will increase. As programs decrease, the, the number will decrease. So we have the same programs expected next year. Caring and Safe is based on funding. And I, I will keep repeating when we, when we say it's based on funding and the numbers are kept the same, that means we've made a conscious decision to keep them the same. Alternative attendance programs based on need, but also impacted by funding. And then if we look at our profile teachers, which are on the next page, Page Ten of yesterday's report, you will see that there has been an increase of about 10. It is mostly due to the programs that are being offered and the, the need to support those programs accordingly. And so you'll see an increase in accelerated OYAP and Indigenous teachers, to name a few. And health and safety just again is based on a requirement, so a contractual requirement. So I will turn it back to the chair.
Thank you, Associate Director Zucker. I'll be ready for Part B. Thank you. And the vote is open, trustees.
Trustee Lee in favor.
Patel in favor.
Pay in favor.
Hassan in favor.
Trustee Dawson, Trustee Nanziata, how do you vote?
Dawson against.
Trustee Nanziata in favor.
Trustee Wong.
Trustee Wong. Is she online? Trustee Wong, how do you vote? Trustee Wong, how do you vote?
Uh pardon me, Chair, um I have been online, I am online. And I'm voting in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Wong. Let's close the vote. All it has carried, thank you, trustees. Item number three.
Uh thank you, and through the chair, uh Appendix C is our designated early childcare educators. There is a decrease in enrollment from uh twenty-four, twenty-five to twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-six. So there is a decrease that you'll see um here, based on enrollment. I do want to add, and, and we do have the numbers um that um Trustee Shan was asking for earlier with regards to the decreases in staffing and the impact on actual bodies. Because of where our um staffing landed at the count date in September, um to go to ten forty-three would actually be an increase of twenty-two ECEs. So we will be hiring ECEs even though in this report it is a decrease. So what I'm saying is that the number that we have in our system is uh one oh two four, which is twenty-two, sorry, I can't do math in my head. One oh two one, which is twenty-two less than we're proposing for next year. So it's actually an increase in the current staffing of twenty-two, but a decrease in staffing based on enrollment from the original uh budget last year.
Thank you, Associate Director Zucker. And the vote is open, trustees.
Trustee Lee's in favor.
Patel in favor.
Pay in favor.
Trustee Nanziata in favor.
Hassan in favor.
Trustee Wong. Trustee Wong.
I'm voting in favor, please.
Thank you. I am pleased to close the vote. And it has carried, thank you. Item number, number four. Associate Director Zucker, going to speak on this.
Uh I, thank you. So Vice Principals, I believe, is number four, um which is Appendix D. I just want to make sure that that's correct. Yes, so we're talking Elementary Vice Principals. So this is based on enrollment. The way that enrollment uh calculates the number of Vice Principals uh under the ministry is that we actually look at a school-by-school enrollment, uh enter that into the ministry's um system and it calculates the number of Vice Principals that we would be allocated. So um it is actually an increase of one point five over the number proposed by staff last year. Um at the same time, um there was a motion passed to increase this number by twenty, so we actually have a hundred and eighty-five uh on hand. And so this would represent a decrease of eighteen point five from the current number.
Thank you, Associate Director, and the vote is open. Am I correct? Thank you.
Trustee Lee's in favor.
Patel in favor.
Pay in favor. In favor.
Trustee Ghost in favor.
Wong in favor.
Trustee Hassan.
Hassan in favor.
Wong voting in favor. Close the vote. And it has carried. Number six.
Number, so Vice Principal Secondary, um we, number five?
Number five, sorry.
Yeah. Uh Vice Principal Secondary, um it is based on enrollment um and we are proposing the same numbers last year that staff proposed, which is a hundred and fifty-three. Uh this, again, there were eight added um after this report or during this report last year. So the number uh is actually a hundred and sixty-one that we currently have on hand. So that would be uh the same proposal as last year, but a decrease of eight over the number that we currently have.
Thank you. And the vote is open.
Trustee Lee's in favor.
Trustee Ghost in favor.
Patel in favor.
Wong in favor.
Trustee Nanziata.
Trustee Nanziata.
Trustee Hassan.
Hassan in favor.
Thank you, can you close the vote, please? And it has carried, thank you, trustees. Number six.
Uh thank you, and through the chair, number six would be Educational Assistance that are not supporting special education. They actually support our, support our Alternative Attendance and Carrying in Safe Schools programs. And this is based on program need um and is expected to remain the same.
Trustees, the vote is open.
Trustee Lee's in favor.
Pay in favor.
Trustee Nanziata in favor.
Ghost in favor.
Hassan in favor.
Wong in favor.
Patel in favor. And number six is carried. Number seven.
Uh thank you, and through the chair, number seven is Special Education Support Staff. Uh this is a decrease um from the prior year based on enrollment. Um the enrollment actually calculated a number of twenty-seven seventy-four. And so this is um fif, approximately fifteen um more than the enrollment calculated. It also is important to note um that um we don't deploy all of our Special Education Support Staff right away. There is a holdback that is attached because of collective agreement provisions that don't allow us to move um many Special Education Support Staff uh around. And therefore, we do need to keep some on hand for when um additional students um come to the board or needs are identified. And so based on that, there, there was an amount withdrawn from last year. And uh there still is a holdback that continues to be um deployed based on need. But the total number in the system um at the time that we did this work was twenty-seven eighty-seven point five. And that is the recommendation for next year. So it's actually maintaining the current level of staffing um for Special Education Support Staff while having a decrease in enrollment.
Thank you, Associate Director. And the vote is open. We're voting on item number seven.
Trustee Lee's in favor.
Trustee Ghost in favor.
Pay in favor.
Trustee Nanziata in favor.
Hassan in favor.
Patel in favor.
Wong against.
All right, it has carried, thank you, trustees. Moving along to item number eight.
Uh thank you, and through the chair, uh this is School Office Clerical. It is based on enrollment. Uh enrollment would have seen a slight uh decrease, but we maintained the same number of staff to support schools. So we are looking at a no change from um previous budget.
Thank you. The vote is open.
Pay in favor.
Lee in favor.
Ghost in favor.
Trustee Nanziata in favor.
Patel in favor.
Wong in favor.
Hassan in favor.
Thank you, trustees, and the item is carried. Number nine.
Uh thank you, and through the chair, number nine are school-based safety monitors. There actually is no funding source specifically for school-based safety monitors. Um but we have kept the numbers the same as previous years based on a no need in schools, so it's, will remain the same.
Thank you, Associate Director. And the vote is open, trustees.
Pay in favor.
Lee in favor.
Patel in favor.
Ghost in favor.
Trustee Nanziata in favor.
Trustee Hassan. And Trustee Wong.
Wong in favor.
Hassan in favor.
The vote is now closed and it has carried. Item number ten.
Uh so thank you, and through the chair, number ten are Lunchroom Supervisors. Again, there is no funding source in the uh core education funding for Lunchroom Supervisors. Uh but based on need, uh we are recommending that we keep the allocation the same as um previous year. And so you will see uh no change from last year's budget.
Thank you. And the vote is open, trustees.
Pay in favor.
Ghost in favor.
Lee in favor.
Trustee Nanziata in favor.
Patel in favor.
Hassan in favor.
The vote is now closed. It has carried, thank you, trustees. Item number eleven.
Uh thank you, and through the chair, item number eleven would be our um food program or aquatic assistance. And I'm not sure if we need to approve this. It's just that this is something that we're still working on and we will provide this at a later date. We do have a little bit of time before any surplus declarations need to be made. We do know that there are changes in the lifeguard uh, uh lifeguarding society um about lifeguarding requirements and we do, we, we are still reviewing the pools that we will have in play next year. So um certainly plan on bringing something forward. Uh it's just that we're still working on this number at this time.
Thank you. The vote is open, trustees. Trustee Patel in favor.
Pay in favor.
Lee in favor.
Ghost in favor.
Trustee Hassan, Trustee Nanziata.
Trustee Nanziata in favor.
Hassan in favor.
Point of uh personal privilege, is this a finance and budget meeting or a special board meeting?
Just special board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Vote is now closed. And it has carried. Number twelve.
Uh thank you, and through the chair, and I think Nanziata may have asked that question because that's what it says on the top of these uh things.
Oh, yeah.
So uh understandable. Again, uh caretaking is number twelve. Um caretaking is based on square footage, but square footage, um believe it or not, is impacted by enrollment. Um so although our enrollment, oh, I've skipped one, I apologize. Food program assistance, uh it is based on um program need and uh we are not uh projecting a change for next year.
Thank you, Associate Director Zucker. The vote is now open, trustees.
Pay in favor.
Lee in favor.
Ghost in favor.
Hassan in favor.
Trustee. Just Kinaraja in favor.
Patel in favor. Trustee Nanziata.
Trustee Nanziata in favor.
The vote is now closed and it has carried, thank you, trustees. Item number thirteen.
Sorry, through the chair, item number thirteen is now caretaking. And so i- it is based on square footage. Uh our decisions are based on square footage and that, that hasn't changed. We, we uh know that uh we have excess capacity. Um so our enrollment numbers do not provide enough funding for the caretaking positions that we have. But we are keeping them the same because the, the need is still the same with regards to the amount of space that our caretakers uh have to clean and maintain. Thank you.
Thank you, Associate Director Zucker. The vote is now open, trustees. Trustee Patel in favor.
Lee in favor.
Pay in favor.
Trustee Ghost in favor.
Trustee Nanziata in favor.
Hassan in favor.
Trustee Patel in favor. Trustee Pay.
Trustee. In favor, in favor.
Thank you. The vote is now closed, it has carried. Now we conclude three point two. Thank you, staff, thank you, Legal Department, thank you, trustees for your patience uh for this item. Uh it, it took a while to get through this, but thank you, everyone, for making this possible.
Um Chair, sorry, point of order or personal privilege, I had a business arising. I'm not sure if now is the appropriate time.
Yes, we will be looking at that now. Thank you, Trustee Dawson. Is it on the screen? Trustee Dawson, you can speak on the business arising.
Uh thank you, through the chair. Um you know, this is, this is really just in anticipation of the previous recommendations passing. Um this was just to request that when we receive the final budget, that staff take into consideration um, or sorry, that they report back around options to increase uh the number of spec ed support staff, um early childhood educators and librarians. That's really all I have to, to say on this. I think it's important that we look at increasing those compared to what was voted on. Um so if that's something that could be presented to us in the report back.
Thank you, Trustee Dawson. Trustee Williams, you are second, do you want to speak to the motion?
Thank you, and through the chair, um as I described in um the previous Effect Meeting, uh I cited uh correspondence that I'd received from a parent with regard to one of my schools. And just emphasizing the importance of supporting our special education uh programs in TDSB and in particular, our congregated sites where we have the most vulnerable students in our system, including medically fragile students. So um I'm fully in support of this motion. And anything we can do to uh increase the supports to our special education programs, our most vulnerable students in the system, I'm fully in supportive and thank you, through the chair.
Thank you, Trustee Williams. Any other speakers? Seeing, hearing none. We will be voting on eScrip.
Risk and the Roger in favor. Trustee Ghost in favor.
Lee in favor.
Trustee Hastings in favor.
Trustee Nanziata in favor. Trustee Nunziata in favor.
Trustee Pay.
Hassan in favor.
Trustee Pay, uh trustee Hassan and trustee Shan.
I said Hassan in favor.
Yeah, we captured your vote trustee Hassan. Trustee Pay and trustee Shan.
Trustee Pay in favor.
Trustee Shan. Oh, okay. Marking apps.
Yeah.
Okay, let's close the vote. Thank you. It has carried. Thank you trustees. Going back to agenda, item number three point one. And this is a committee report from February twenty seventh of special meeting. It's on page one of the agenda. And we have six items to consider. The first item is three point one one, contract awards operations. Um, the recommendations are for approval. I love, I would like staff to speak on this item, please. Thank you.
Uh, thank you through the chair. We'll go to senior manager, Pat Manathan.
Uh, thank you through the chair for the contracts awards operations report for appendix A to be received for information. We have one item. For appendix B to be received for committee approval, uh we have one item and for contracts to be approved by board, we have three items. I'll open this up now for any questions.
Thank you. Trustees, any questions? Seeing, hearing none. I need a mover and seconder for this item, please. Trustee McLean and trustee Williams. We'll do wish, so of hands, please. Trustees online, how do you vote?
Lee in favor.
Trustee Nunziata in favor.
Pay in favor.
Girls in favor.
Dawson in favor.
King in favor.
Hassan in favor.
Anyone against?
Trustee Rajwani in favor.
And it has carried. Thank you trustees. The next item is three point one two, contract awards facilities, and the recommendations are for approval. I'd like staff to speak on the, on this item, please.
Thank you through the chair, the contract award for facilities. We're presenting appendix A uh for information with fifteen items. Appendix B that received committee approval for seven items and appendix C to be approved at board with three items. I will open the floor for any question.
Thank you trust, uh thank you staff. Anyone on the speaker's list? E-Script. Okay, we'll be voting on E-Script. I need a mover and seconder for this item, please. Trustee McLean, trustee Williams. And we'll be voting on E-Script.
Lee in favor.
Trustee Patel.
Trustee Nunziata in favor.
Siskin Raja in favor.
Hassan in favor.
Trustee Patel in favor.
Dawson in favor.
Trustee Gauz, trustee Dabidis, trustee Arts. How do you vote? Trustee Arts, trustee Gauz. Trustee Arts voted. Trustee Gauz. Okay, let's mark her absent. And close the vote and it has carried. Thank you trustees. Next item is three point one three, financial facts, revenue and expenditure trends, February twenty twenty five report. The recommendations are for receipt. And who will be speak on this item?
It's for you, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to speak on this. This is our annual publication of financial information and student enrollments and capital spending of the board. Uh, this year is similar to every other year. The only change in the layout was two major components. One was around explaining bill one twenty four to our stakeholders. And the second was that the funding models changed for the grants from student needs to core education funding. And we put some additional charts in for that. Uh, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you staff. Uh, I I don't see any speaker's list on this item. I need a mover and seconder for this item. Trustee McLean and trustee Williams. Voting by E-Script or online? The vote is open on E-Script trustees.
Siskin Raja in favor.
Jelovic is in favor.
Trustee Patel in favor.
Pay in favor.
Trustee Nunziata in favor.
Lee in favor.
Trustee Hassan, trustee Erhard. Trustee Hard in favor, trustee Hassan.
Hassan in favor.
Thank you. Let's close the vote and it has carried. Next item is item three point one four, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget consultation schedule. And the recommendations are for receipt. I'd like staff to speak on this item, please.
Uh, thank you and through the chair, we had brought uh some information to trustees with regards to uh consultation, uh public consultation. We recognize the importance of getting feedback with regards to our budget from the public. And we want to make sure that we have uh as much information as possible to share with the public. So we had initially been looking at um the last week in March. But uh through discussions at the committee, recognized that it uh would be more beneficial to do this. Um, the middle to the end of April when we have more information. Hopefully about the the grants, but also about um potential areas that will help us to to balance the budget. So we do expect to do um three town halls, one in the east, one in the west that are both in person. And then one here at fifty fifty, that would be some form of hybrid. Uh, we're certainly open to to feedback. This isn't set in stone and it's not for approval. But happy to continue to hear feedback from trustees. We will also continue to do consultation with PAC and CAC. Uh, and we also plan on doing a um survey that will go out to all the public that will assist um trustees in in knowing the priorities of uh the public in order to help make decisions.
Thank you, Associate Director Zucker. And we have trustee Dawson. Trustee Dawson, go ahead.
Thank you through the chair. Um, I just wondered why there's no downtown um town hall. We had a huge turnout last year, like it was standing room only. So I'm just wondering, could we add that back?
Uh, through the chair, certainly we can look at uh to make sure that we we get the feedback from all um areas. We were more looking at it with the new learning center model. We were making sure that we had both learning centers and then wanted to provide a central location and a hybrid model, but happy to to add that one.
Thank you.
Thank you trustee Dawson. Anyone else?
Chair, can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, through the chair, through staff, there had been a commitment uh uh last year to do a consultation with um students. I, what shape would that take?
Uh, sorry, uh trustee Dabidis, I did forget to mention that. So last year we did connect with Student Senate and the Equity Collective. Uh, we are looking at the Student Senate as well, but if we uh are concerned that we're not getting um as much feedback as we would like from students, we're open to other suggestions.
And that would be the concern for sure. The the Senate is is definitely not um the end-all of of student voice, and I think we need to have um uh and then a number of trustees have shared this, uh more input for more, from more students. Um, it's so if there could be uh which I understood it to be the commitment last year, so um that that there would be a meeting that would be specific uh uh for students where we do some outreach to uh let them know um that that their voice is gonna be heard.
Uh, thank you and through the chair, appreciate that. And and uh you're correct, there is an expectation that we we gather as much voice from students as possible. So we will take that away and provide an update to trustees. Um, likely via trustee weekly because our um next FBC meeting isn't until the end of March on um how we would plan on doing that.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, and uh thank you staff and uh thank you Chair.
Thank you, trustee Dabidis. There is no more speakers on this item. Can we open the vote, please?
Siskin Raja in favor.
Lee in favor.
Trustee Nunziata in favor.
Pay in favor.
Patel in favor.
Trustee Girls in favor.
Jelovic is in favor.
Hassan in favor.
The vote is closed and it has carried. Thank you trustees. Moving item number three point one five, it's projected financial forecast and the recommendations are for receipt. I'd like staff to speak on this item, please.
Thank you and through the chair, uh this again, um report was brought forward is really the the kickoff to our our budget. It it provides uh trustees with staff's best estimation as to where we are with regards to next year's budget. Uh, we did talk about the fact that we had a twenty eight million dollar deficit currently. And um there were a number of issues that is causing that number to increase to approximately um sixty six million dollar deficit projected for next year. Uh, it does include things like inflation and contractual obligations. It includes things like utilities, including the carbon tax. Uh, we know that there are pressures or changes happening at the federal level that are impacting international students. We know that interest rates are going down and that impacts our interest revenue. So although we aren't making any significant changes related to next year, um mostly due to things that are outside of our control. Uh, we do have an increase uh in the projected deficit. So again, this was, it it's about, it's sixty five point nine million, which is in the report. It is um we will await uh the the core education funding. Although based on discussions with ministry staff, we don't expect to see significant changes in the core education funding. We are using projected enrollment, which is again um completed by our planning and enrollment department and usually very accurate. So uh we think it's a, it's it's a a good starting point. And when we do the calculation for the projection of next year's core education funding, again, I just will remind trustees that uh our budget department was within a million dollars on the calculation last year, and then there was an eleven million dollar surprise. So we are fairly confident in the uh projection of revenue for next year. Um, and we will continue, again, this is the first um first part of the budget process. We will still now work with staff to determine um what we will bring forward to trustees with regards to how do we get to a balanced budget. We do know that we have some direction from the ministry in terms of uh the deficit recovery plan and the letter that they sent to us last year. Um, expecting us to uh be at a break even position um with it with uh programs and items outside of our non-core uh mandate. So really supporting students in K to twelve education. Uh, we also know that um included in that letter was a direction that one-time funding be used for one-time positions and when funding, one-time funding is gone, those positions would be reduced or uh board, the board would have to have, find an alternate funding source. So those two things are included in that letter. We also know from the auditor general that we received uh they acknowledged that TDSB has a structural deficit. They acknowledged that some of the reasons are within our control and some of the reasons are not within our control. They advised that we work on both of those areas, so we can, the things that we can control, those are the things that we will be bringing back to trustees um for for recommendations. And for the things outside of our control, the auditor general requested or or recommended that we work with the ministry um on determining how we can um support TDSB to get to a balanced budget position. Uh, both us and the ministry indicated that we would do so. And I have reached out to ministry staff to start those conversations. So through the chair, I will pass it back to you.
You associate director Zucker, we do have a question from trustees. Siskin Raja.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I apologize if this question has already been asked. Um, I wasn't able to be um here for the entirety. Um, through you, Mr. Chair, I just want to know from staff, you know, while we're doing these projections, are there any conversations being had about how the tariffs are going to impact this? Um, not necessarily just this forecast, but also our capital um um budget. When it comes to, you know, cost of things rising, I know it's hard for you to, you know, predict where that's gonna go, but I just want to know, is that a conversation you're having at your table? And perhaps more importantly, is this something that the ministry is is talking about and its potential impacts on on schools and what this means for our budgets?
Uh, thank you and through the chair, it's a great question and it is something that we as staff uh know that will uh have an impact on us as you indicated, both operationally and then also our capital costs. Uh, we um will continue to have conversations with the ministry uh about it. Uh, we know that in the past, when sometimes when things are at our control, the ministry does provide one-time funding. They haven't given any indication that that's the case, but it is something that we are certainly pursuing. Um, to see if there will be additional support. It's something that will impact all school boards across the province, so it is certainly that something that we will work together on um through our uh association in order to bring that to the ministry's attention. Um, but also TDSB staff will will speak directly to them and continue to speak directly to them. But uh everybody uh does know that this will impact us moving forward. And it's just to determine whether or not there will be funding attached to it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And then um I'm happy to hear conversations are being had. I think right now, um, you know, it, there's so much uncertainty, but just that we as a school board, you know, I just urge us to continue, not that we're not, but to continue thinking about these things. They have huge ripple effects. Um, you know, if cost of living goes up, we already as a board, uh you know, struggle recruiting um employees who get poached by other boards because they have cheaper cost of living. So uh it just has a lot of ripple effects, especially, you know, these conversations we're having about enrollment. So I just um, you know, just wanted to put that out there that we are as trustees thinking about this. Um, and it it will uh impact us in some form. Thank you staff.
Thank you trustee, thank you staff. Uh, we do have a mover and seconder for this item. It's trustee McLean and trustee Williams. Can we open the vote, please?
Siskin Raja in favor.
Trustee Patel in favor.
Lee is in favor.
Trustee Nunziata in favor.
Trustee Hassan in favor.
Pay in favor.
Girls in favor.
Trustee Dabidis. Trustee Dabidis. Trustee Dabidis. You see? All right, let's mark trustee Dabidis absent. The vote is now closed and it has carried. Thank you, trustees. Moving along, item number three point one six, business arising, keeping at distance staffing positions through twenty twenty five, twenty six budget. This was moved by trustees Erhard and trustee Rajwani on behalf of trustee Laskin. I invite Moore to speak on this item, please.
Thanks very much. And through the chair, I did want to move an amendment tonight, just for clarification. Uh, if that's possible, I tried to send it in advance. And essentially this uh motion uh was, and I know much of this board has heard me speak to this before, it's to keep the additional staffing positions that were added into the twenty twenty four, twenty five budget and have them be built into the projected financial forecast moving forward. Uh, I'm also of the understanding that that would uh build it into the staffing allocations that we just approved for elementary and secondary VP. So it would move the elementary VP staffing allocation to one eighty six point five. And I can have staff confirm that. And it would move the secondary VP allocation to one sixty one. And that would be in keeping with the motion from last year to add back and would um offer some much needed stability in our system uh for maintaining uh vice principal staffing levels. Um, it would also uh have incorporated um two caring and safe school central staff, twelve social work positions and eleven child and youth counselors that were added back during the twenty four, twenty five budget process. And so these are also really important elements in our system. My understanding is they were also recommended by the auditor general um during um the review uh to be maintained uh for student mental health and well-being. Uh, I'm happy to answer questions and grateful to trustee Rajwani for seconding. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Erhard. Trustee Rajwani, do you want to speak on this item?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Rajwani. Two speakers, please. I need a mover and second for this item. It's same, same thing. All right. So we have trustee Erhard and Rajwani, okay? Escrip? No, there's no speakers, please. So we are voting on Escrip, trustees. And the vote is
Lee is in favor?
Trustee Pay in favor?
Trustee goes in favor?
Trustee Patel in favor?
Trustee Nziata in favor?
Hassan in favor?
Trustee McLean? Let's close the vote and it has carried. Thank you, trustees. So now the main motion has been amended. Okay, trustees, now we are back to the main motion, which is A and B, as amended. And the vote is open, trustees. Trustee Patel in favor?
Lee is in favor?
Pay in favor?
Trustee Nziata in favor?
Risk and Rajan in favor?
Trustee Hassan, trustee Arts. Trustee McLean?
Hassan in favor?
Trustee McLean is in favor? Because everybody voted, please close the vote. And it has carried. Thank you, trustees. And the next item is item three point one seven, twenty twenty five, twenty six, update on central savings. The recommendations are for receipt. I invite staff to speak on this matter, please.
Uh, thank you. And through the chair, if trustees will recall at the uh August twenty twenty four um board meeting, um, staff presented uh the deficit recovery plan. And in that plan, uh, it did include five million dollars of central savings. And that would include things like uh the permit fees that we, uh, that, that trustees have um passed increases um, central, the general interest programs and other areas. And so there was a commitment to five million dollars. We wanted to provide trustees with an update. At this point, we are at two point one million and we will continue to update trustees as those savings are found.
Thank you, associate director Zucker. Do you have anybody on the speaker's list? No, seeing, hearing none. Can I have a mover and second for three point one seven, please? Trustee Erhard, trustee McLean? The vote is open, trustees.
Trustee Nziata in favor?
Pay in favor?
Risk and Rajan in favor?
Trustee Lee is in favor?
Trustee Patel in favor? And the vote is now closed and it has carried. Thank you, trustees. The next item on the agenda is to be discussed in private. I need a mover and second to move to private, please. Trustee McLean, trustee Erhard. And who is staying in the room, director? Staying in the room?
Uh, thank you. And through you, Chair, just um legal and um the associate directors.
Thank you.
And of course, um Denise.
Sorry, through the chair, uh, executive officer, uh Snyder may